Good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Duarkesh Nalan. Ronald Brooks.
Yes.
Sierra Samara.
Here.
Jason Assarifi.
Here.
Glenn Feldman.
Here.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner Adam Menard.
Here.
Staff Assistant Daniel Chamber Roberts.
Here.
Good evening. This is the open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, now called order at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being conducted by a hybrid format under Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. For this meeting, Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. The remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that the meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? Being none? Accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured on the recording. Please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration. Each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters. Discuss this evening without first being granted my consent. Finally, each vote taken to this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First on the agenda is A&R Auburn Hill Road. Is there anyone here representing the property on Auburn Hill Road or online?
Yes, this is Mike Scott from Land Design Collaborative.
So can you explain to us exactly what you're doing with your, the property up there on the hill?
Sure. This, um, this lot is a lot that was recorded in the early 70s. The applicants purchased this lot and two others, uh, all wooded lots, um, last year or little over a year ago now, um, and are looking to construct a home at, uh, number 12. And I think when they spoke with Mr. Menard, the suggestion was that because the subdivision was, had been approved so many years ago, that they come forward with an A&R just to reproduce the lot. So the survey by Feldman reproduces the lot as originally endorsed on the plan of the entire subdivision. And, um, they're again looking to file a building permit. They've been through conservation, um, and are just seeking the sort of reendorsement of a prior, uh, previously approved lot.
Do you have any idea when you might want to build this house? Or houses?
If the applicant's there, I'll let them answer that question.
Because the road doesn't go far enough to meet the requirements for these lots. So that's a paper street as far as I know from the Elizabeth Boyle Trust all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac.
Right. So they're looking to access off the end of that paved road similar to what the neighbor across the street.
Can't hear you.
Sorry, could you speak up?
Mike.
All right. Yeah, they're, they're seeking to construct a driveway off the end of the road and access from the same stretch of Auburn Hill as the neighbor across the street. They're only looking to, um, improve the first lot on the right.
We have the Building Commissioner, DPW, to determine the driveway in this lot.
Okay. You're gonna have to go through the DPW and the Builder Commission to get permission to put a driveway in. I have no, myself, I have no objection to the subdivision of the two lots. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything to say about this in regards to the subdivision? Glenn, do you have anything to ask, questions?
Who was he talking about? Nope. It's this one or this one.
Eric, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Ron, do you have any questions?
No.
Jason, do you have any questions?
No.
May I have a motion to approve, uh, the lots as they're divided?
I move to approve the lots as divided.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Glenn?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, I, it is a vote. It's approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Of course, the last one's upside down. I'm gonna need your pen first. Thanks. Next on tonight's agenda is applicant Webster 5 requesting a site plan approval and special permit under Section 3.2.3.1.1 and 3.9.2.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a bank with a drive-through. Site improvements, existing building to be demolished at 400 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass. 101, Map 35, Parcel 2. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Glenn?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, I, it is a vote. Hearing's now open. Good evening, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilton here on behalf of the applicant Webster 5. As Mr. Chairman read in the, in the opening here, it's a demolition planned of their existing branch at 400 Southbridge Street. So this is across from the mall next to the Dunkin' Donuts. A bank branch that's been there forever, long time. Um, this is planned to be a demolition of that and a rebuild of a branch on that, on that site. New parking, new landscape, new, new everything. I'll have Patrick McCarty, who's the civil engineer, give you a bit more of a description of exactly what the features are. But I can tell you, we've been to Conservation Commission and have gotten to the point where they're, they're ready to make an approval. They just need the DEP file number to be issued. We've also been to Conservation Commission, needed a special permit to render more than 15% of the lot impervious in the Aquafor 2 Protection Ovalay District. Now we're here for site plan, plan review. Um, it's going to utilize a lot of the same features that are there now. There'll be restrictions on turns in and out based on, you know, what's, what's there in existing. There's an existing turn lane there to get you left kind of onto the site. Uh, you know, so there's, there's a utilization of those existing features. Uh, we were asked on a prior occasion, you know, can we fix the Dunkin' Donuts traffic? And I'll just tell you at the outset, we can't really do a whole lot about that. But we're certainly not looking to produce anything that is, you know, any more dangerous or any more complicated than what's there already. So we think this will help. Uh, you know, the bank will have a drive-through facility, which it does currently. It'll be in the rear instead of in the front where it is now. Uh, but in terms of, you know, this project, it's really a modernization of the site. So demolition, full demolition and a rebuild, um, you know, of the site. We, we do know that Graves Engineering is, is often doing a peer review and that that hasn't been completed yet. So we anticipate that, you know, we'll be able to address any of those comments that they might have. But we don't, you know, we don't have the benefit of those and neither does the board at this point. So to the, to the, to the point where we get to the end of this hearing, we anticipate probably asking for a continuation unless the board is really comfortable with what you've seen. Um, and we understand that, but we certainly wanted to have this conversation, understand what concerns you may have, answer any questions that you may have, try to address those things in, in a, in an orderly fashion. So Patrick, do you want to give a little bit more description of what we have for, for site improvements planned?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Todd. Good evening. Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering. Nice to see some of you from previous and look forward to working with those of you who haven't worked with yet. As Todd just explained, we're here tonight for site plan approval and special permit for the property at 400 Southbridge Street. I have a rendered plan here. So we have Southbridge Street along the bottom, Howe Street here on the side. As Todd mentioned, the kind of infamous Dunkin' Donuts property is here to our right. We have, um, the existing building is shown here in light gray, which is a two-story building. It's kind of built into the slope. So there's driveway and parking at the front with kind of a awkward backwards type drive-through approach for one drive-through lane, parking in the front. And then there's a second curb cut on Howe Street that gets you to the upper level parking lot. So as Todd mentioned, the plan is to fully demolish everything on the site, the building, the site improvements, the utilities, and start fresh with the new project, uh, which is about half the footprint of the existing building. Um, and geez, about 25% of the total area. The existing building's about 11,000 square feet. Our proposed building is 2,400 square feet. Essentially maintaining the curb cut in off of Southbridge Street. As Todd mentioned, that would be restricted to right turn out only, as is the existing one. You would be able to turn left in from the left turn pocket that's in Southbridge Street. And then we're proposing a slight modification, uh, to slide the entrance onto Howe Street south a little so that it lines up straight with our drive-through. The current one, you have to come in and kind of zigzag across, which makes for an awkward traffic flow pattern. So we're trying to straighten that up. There's a sidewalk along Southbridge Street and then a retaining wall that's above that. That retaining wall would remain. Everything from the wall into the site would be removed. The paving, utilities, um, sight lighting, landscaping, all that would go away. The building would go away. And then what we're proposing, this bold black line represents a retaining wall would essentially be cutting into the hill so that the building and parking and drive-through lanes would all be at essentially one level. So you'd have an entrance in here, two-lane traffic here. We have eight parking spaces here along Howe Street, 14 here along the front, three along the side of the building, access to the three drive-through lanes along with an escape lane that gets you around and back out to Southbridge Street. We are going to maintain sprinklers in the building even though it's not required by code as there's already a, a sprinkler sized line coming into the site. Maintain our electric connection. We won't need a gas because the building will be heated with heat pumps. Sewer, we're maintaining the connection out to Southbridge Street. And drainage, right now we have a whole new drainage system. Proposed a series of catch basins and manholes that connect out to the existing drainage infrastructure in Southbridge Street. We did receive an email from the DPW that essentially said, yes, we recognize it's a redevelopment. Yes, we recognize there's a decrease in impervious area, but we still want you to do some recharge. So, uh, we will be amending the plans to incorporate some recharge for the rooftop. And we're holding off on doing those revisions until we get the peer review back from Graves. The decrease in impervious, although not huge, it's about 500 square feet, but it is a reduction over existing conditions. The light green is the area that would be loomed and seeded. The dark green is the existing tree buffer that's between us and the abutting property that will be, remain is very minimal clearing just right here to allow for the over excavation and installation of a site retaining wall. Uh, fully conforming with all our zoning setbacks, our parking requirements. Pretty simple, straightforward on the planning side. We did bring with us a rendering, so prepared. So this would be the front elevation along Southbridge Street. This is the, I guess, left side elevation, right side elevation showing the drive-through canopy. Architectural plans are still being developed, but this is kind of preliminarily what the bank envisions the building to look like. And then your typical bank branch layout for the inside with mixture of office, staff space, teller space. I do have to admit that I just was reviewing the submission package and realized that we did not submit the traffic study that we had prepared. So I was scrambling on my phone to forward that to Adam. Uh, I'll get that over to him. The summary of that is that this, because it's a bank branch, it's been a bank branch. We're decreasing the size. So the, the summary is, is that this will have no impact on traffic operations for the surrounding streets. But obviously I need to provide that document to you to verify that. So I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you want to, as Todd mentioned, wait for Graves to weigh in. I didn't hear from any other departments, Adam. I don't think we've heard it from anybody with DPW, so.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Are you none? Glenn?
I, I had a question about the garbage, um, the.
Yes, fenced-in dumpster enclosure.
Will they be coming to, uh, during business hours? Will they be coming to empty that or is that going to create any issues?
I wouldn't, um, so I, I guess Todd and I didn't introduce Brian McAvoy from Webster 5 that's here with us. Our, my apologies, one of us should have done that. Brian, do we know the frequency? I imagine it's pre.
It would be your off-hours typically. Which is insensible.
Eric, do you have any questions?
Um, I think you said that you were cutting, like making everything one level?
Yes.
Are you removing any vegetation that's like around the area and creating pavement? Or like, how are you just making the parking lot one level or?
Yeah, so the, it's hard to see if you have the plans in front of you. You can see the light gray hatch area here represents the existing building.
Okay.
And there's a paved parking lot in front of the existing building. There's an existing driveway out to Southbridge. And there's an existing driveway out to Howe Street. There's a second driveway in above the building that goes to another parking area. And so we're really, we're reconstructing, essentially reconstructing the front parking area, putting the new building essentially where the existing building is, but at the first floor height, and then digging out behind the existing building. So taking that back parking lot and dropping it down to the same.
Oh, okay.
Because right now it's built into the hill. So you have a, basically a first floor entrance from the Southbridge Street side and a second floor entrance from the backside. So we're pushing it, it all down on one level. So this will be a horseshoe-shaped wall high on the grass side, low on the pavement side. Is that?
Thank you. Yeah, that, that clears it up.
Ronnie?
I, I don't see an area for snow storage.
Yes, so, um, I guess we didn't specifically call it out, but we have a green space between the back of parking and the retaining wall. We have a large green space in the corner so they could push up the driveway and into that corner. Then we have open space again between the wall and the current line and then an open area here. As well. So there's adequate space around the perimeter and in the corners. But if you'd like, on the revised plans that I can specifically call that out.
Jason?
Nope.
I got a couple of questions. Uh, the height of the retaining wall, how high is it?
If you allow me, I'm gonna grab the grading plan. So if you refer to sheet number four, which is a grading and drainage plan, um, there are spot elevations. So down here, it essentially starts at one foot tall. It climbs to six feet at the start of the radius, eight feet at the end of the radius.
Nine feet on the south side?
Yep, continues across to nine feet and then it comes back down. So at the highest, it's nine feet.
Is that a, um, a fence right behind it or right on that wall? It's not really.
Yeah, there's a fence above, yes, sir, there's a fence above it.
How high is the fence gonna be?
Uh, 42 inches is the minimum building code height. So that wall will require a stamped design, um, and a permit from the Building Commissioner for construction that would show that details. We show it basically diagrammatically on our plans where it needs to be and the height of it. We don't design the wall itself, a structural engineer that would, would design that.
And then, um, my next question, I see the grading on the south side from the Mangola property toward the bank. And then I see it's gonna run down, it's gonna run north, and then it's gonna run south. Now is that coming over the wall, under the wall, through the wall? I'm assuming, and I may be wrong, that the grade behind the wall is gonna be even with the wall.
Yes, and so there's, there's typically stone, um, behind the wall with, with drains at the bottom of the wall so that it can, it won't build up. Yeah, so it, a lot of it runs as the existing grades run towards Howe Street. But anything that gets to the wall, there's stone behind the wall and four-inch drains out through the face of the wall so that hydrostatic pressure doesn't build up behind it.
So you're leaving like a stone curtain wall visible all the way around the wall?
No, you would loom over it, but you know, you'd only put four inches of loom so it would still be able to percolate through into the stone behind it.
I really think that would happen with the rain we've had this year. It'd come right over the wall. Now, do you put filter fabric over the stone?
Yes.
Um, my other, two other questions that I have is where is the potable water line? I see the fire line.
It is on seat five, which is the utility plan.
What's that?
So the, um.
You have a six-inch fire service, correct?
Correct. Just before the, where it's labeled six-inch fire service, just before that, we come off, in front of the valve, we come off of that fire line with the domestic outside the building. So there'd be two separate valves right outside the building, one for domestic, one for fire protection.
What, what's feeding the inch and a half, uh, domestic? What's feeding the inch and a half domestic?
The six inch in from how?
Can't do that. You can't put up a service off a fire line.
You can if they're separately valved.
No, I've never seen it.
I've built, I've designed it and I've built it 50 times if I've done it once.
I've never seen it done, always a separate line. We just did one in Springfield and they made us put a separate fire line in and actually two separate potable water lines in. Not off the same run. That's why, that's why I couldn't find them. I'm going, where's it out in the street?
Yeah, no, they're, it's, it's in off of one service. And obviously the DPW Water Department would have to approve that, but.
Absolutely.
I don't know, like maybe a second table. Thank you.
My next question tonight is the 200-foot inner riparian zone. By definition, a riparian zone is a wetlands.
It's a resource area. Yes.
That where you're recharging the system?
No, so the 200-foot, so across the street from us is Darkbrook, which is a perennial stream. So the Rivers Protection Act establishes a 100-foot inner and a 200-foot outer riparian zone from that perennial stream. There's also a bordering vegetated wetland that's along the fringes of Darkbrook. So there's a 100-foot buffer zone associated with that. So any work within those areas is under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. So concurrently, we filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. We went to the hearing. If we had been issued a DEP file number, they would have approved the project that night, but they cannot until they actually have that number. So we're waiting.
Actually paving over that area, correct?
Yep.
So I, I'm confused. How do you label it a riparian zone when it's not a riparian zone, it's a paved surface?
Oh, no, the, the riparian zone could have anything in it. That would fall under the previously degraded statute of the Rivers Protection Act. So yes, it's riparian zone, which is a 200-foot offset from the mean annual high water line of the perennial stream, which is what brings you into Conservation Commission jurisdiction. That could be forest, it could be lawn, it could be pavement, it could be anything. And so you have to tell, in, in the notice of intent form that you file with Conservation, you say, okay, the total riverfront area on my site is X, previously degraded is Y, undisturbed is E, and you give them that tabulation as you, when you submit the notice of intent that Ecotec prepared for us.
It just confused me because I looked at riparian, so I never seen that, uh, to be honest with you, I've never seen that term used before. And I looked it up and I go, it's a wetlands, how is that a wetlands? I was confused. And then, um, on the drainage, just a, a quick one. You see it at the, uh, west side. You see a catch basin on the east side, uh, down near the roadway. It goes to a drain manhole. It goes to another drain manhole, a catch basin comes into that. Then it heads out to another catch basin. I don't see where the direction of flow is. I'm assuming the catch basin on, on the Southbridge Street side flows toward that manhole.
Correct, and then it flows across the street to Darkbrook. So that's how the existing stormwater is connected out of the site is into that catch basin in Southbridge Street. So we, we designed a network of new catch basins, new drain manholes, new pipes that all connect to that last drain manhole, which is Drain Manhole 3, that, I'm sorry, Drain Manhole 4, which is a water quality unit to remove TSS prior to discharge to the existing stormwater system in Southbridge Street.
So we are tying into the line that goes across the Darkbrook reservoir?
Correct.
There is, is that a catch basin right at the edge of Southbridge Street?
It is, yes.
You're gonna tie into a catch basin and then have that go into another manhole?
I'm tying into the existing pipe that's there. That's how, that's how this whole site's tied in now is through that pipe. So Drain Manhole 4, the last new structure.
I'm surprised the state's letting you do that. That's a state road.
That's correct. Yep, so.
And the state didn't have a problem with that?
We haven't submitted with the state yet. We'll need an access permit from the state for the work on the curb cut. And we'll also need a drainage improvements permit from them. MastDOT has invented several different permits now to cover everything that one used to cover.
Thought you were gonna get it next week, that's for sure, not with this.
No. So point of reference, so the Volkswagen driveway that was existing, that was paved with asphalt curb, we wanted to repave it with granite curb in the exact same footprint, and it took us four months of ping pong with MastDOT until the point where I finally made the guy meet me out there. And I'm like, it's here, it's already here. We just want to take the pavement out and repave it. He's like, yeah, well, so it's, it's fun. Um, but we didn't want to file with MastDOT until we had at least had an initial meeting with the Planning Board to see if you had any, you know, red flag comments on the design. And also we wanted to hear back from Graves because if we're gonna make any changes to the drainage or really the site design to address any of Mr. Walsh's comments, we want to make sure that the final set of plans is what's being submitted to MastDOT to minimize the back and forth of that process.
So how much water do you expect to stream out of the, um, curb cut on Southbridge Street? I'm looking at the contour lines and it's heading right that way, right from the hill behind, over the wall, down the side of the building, and right out into Southbridge.
That's why we have catch basin six right at the right-of-way line.
See that? I don't see it.
May I approach, sir?
Sure. Oh, I see it.
Got it?
Yeah, I see it. So it's gonna come down the driveway. Yeah, I see it. So it's gonna come down the driveway, cut across the driveway, going north and go into the Catch Basin.
Yeah, you could see that the contours are angled, so the grading of that driveway pushes the water to that gutter line so that Catch Basin Six picks it up before it goes out to the Southbridge Street.
And that goes over to the manhole, then goes, or the Catch Basin, then it goes across the street?
Correct.
Just hard to read half-size prints sometimes.
Write it in extra set, you're welcome to keep them if-
No, no, that's fine. On your lighting, has that been submitted to the town for?
Yes, the photometric plan was included.
And I see the Catch Basin hood. I don't know what the town standard is for Catch Basin hood. You just said whatever the Catch Basin the town specifies. If not, then it's a need of foundry. Would you just fine with me?
Yes, and I made sure, 'cause I remember you, you gave me a runaround on the details for Mazda and Volvo and Volkswagen, and so I made sure that those are the same details that are on this plan, 'cause I knew you'd be on it.
I'm glad you didn't say put down a yellow bear on again. So when you rip it up, all the old pavements, so you're actually just clearing the entire site of what's there now? Are you gonna try to use the existing gravel underneath the pavement that's there now? And move it around where you need it? And how deep's that gonna be underneath?
So the project is being put out to bid to four or five local companies to bid on the construction. And so that would be kinda at the discretion of the selected site contractor. Personally, I don't feel, you know, you either pay by the square yard to reclaim pavement or you pay a day rate. I'm not sure due to the limited footprint of paving that reclamation would make sense for a site this size. You know, let's say we're gonna do the Auburn Mall parking lot, then that would definitely make sense because you have the square yardage of area to justify-
A lot of guys just peel up the asphalt.
A lot, I think on this one, peel and load out and then-
I see the gravel underneath.
Yep.
And the, on your curb reveal, I don't, it's on page nine, I believe. Rigor granite precast concrete curb detail? I don't see what the reveal is. It's not shown. It's usually six inches, but it's not shown. Your width is shown, but not your height.
It's not specifically called out on the detail, however, if you look at page 10, there's a blow-up of the grading around the building that shows the six-inch reveal. But I can certainly add that note to the plans.
It just makes it easier for anybody trying to figure out what it is. That's all the questions I have. Anybody else have any, anything else?
John, I just, I, photometrics, are they all zero at the property line?
Yes, sir, they are.
I couldn't see them.
Yep, I have a full size here if you'd like to see.
I believe you guys want a continuance?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yeah. So that we can receive the Graves Engineering Review.
I'm sorry, Todd.
Yeah, so we can receive the Graves Engineering Review. We would request a continuation. We're happy to go on to your next available agenda if the Graves review isn't done. I'm sure Adam will let us know. We can continue, but we'd like to try to keep moving it along, so if the next available agenda-
So our next meeting is the 12th of March. The filing meeting is the 26th of March. You just wanna go to the 26th, you wanna take, roll the dice for the 12th? I doubt if we'll be done by the 12th, but-
We've had some, we've had some interaction with Graves. It sounds like their report might be ready even later this week, so we think that would probably give us, I don't know if you need more time to-
Yeah, let's, let's, put us on the 12th now, please, if you could, and then once I see Mr. Walsh's letter later this week, I'll be able to let Adam know if we can get a set of plans turned around in time or not. Realistically, we'd have to get a set of plans turned around, back to Jeff for review, and then back to you with a second letter, so might end up at the 26th, but we'd prefer to shoot for the 12th and see.
They have a motion to continue the hearing to our next meeting of the 12th of March.
Move to continue the hearing till the 12th of March.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Glenn?
Hi.
Ron?
Hi.
All right.
Jason, myself, John Rees, and I, it is a vote.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is John Welsh, Herb Chambers requesting site plan approval under section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for reconfiguration of parking lot area at 735 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, map 33 parcel 88.
Motion to open.
Let's see if there's anybody here.
They're all on.
May I have a motion to open the hearing for the Herb Chambers?
Motion.
We have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Jason, myself, John Rees, and I, it is a vote. So I'm at the understanding that you gentlemen are online?
Yes, good evening, sir. Chris, Christopher Mingase from Heinlein, Beeler, Mingase and Heineman, representing the petitioner applicant, John Welsh. With me is David Newhall and David McDonald from Crocker Design Group, both online as well. And we're here to present our site plan for approval.
No one here in the audience, does anybody have any questions? Right off the bat, none of the questions, we're gonna have you go through this. But I would appreciate it when you turn in plans that one page isn't right set up, the next page upside down, the next page is right side up. 'Cause I don't have time to go through that. I just don't. If you look at the plans you've turned in-
My apologies, I agree with you, that's not-
C2's upside down, C3's right side up, the next one's upside down. I know we're trying to save paper, save department, but that's just a little crazy. 'Cause even on your site general notes are upside down from the front cover sheet. It's just, to me, it's just aggravating.
Yeah, that's frustrating, and I do agree with you, sir.
So can you give us a run-through of what you're actually doing? Is there any way you can bring up a the plan on the-
Absolutely.
Screen, please?
So, good evening, Chair and Vice Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the board. As I have said, I have our engineers, David Newhall and Todd McDonald, available to go through the plans as you have before you. Herb, this is the Herb Chambers, Washington, Inc. project where they operate a Hyundai and Genesis store at 735 Southbridge Street in Auburn, Mass. As you can see from the site development plans, there's an overview of the property as it sits today. That property sits between Southbridge Street and Washington Street. It's our intention to basically remove the back portion of the parking lot and rebuild that parking lot. We believe this will provide a much up-to-date parking area for our customers. It'll provide better sightlines, it'll also provide better lighting, and overall upgrade that parking area. Herb Chambers has operated out of that site for several decades. And at this point, this has been identified for a period of time as a project that that was in the works. And with the help of Crocker Design Group and folks from the town, we were able to produce this plan as before you now. The basic idea is that we're going to remove the current parking lot and create approximately 297 spaces. Right now, there are about 230 spaces. It provides for, quite frankly, an easier methodology of parking the cars, but also getting around in the lot itself. We have, I understand that the plans are out for peer review over at Graves Engineering. I know that they've had them for a couple of weeks now, and my understanding is that there will be something hopefully back in the next week or so. So just like the prior applicant, we'd be seeking to continue the hearing, obviously, to for you folks to get that peer review, address any concerns that you folks might have. If the board wishes, I can have one of the engineers that are with me to give you a further description of the site, just a general overall picture of what the plans you have before you basically state. So, David, you wanna give it a shot?
Yeah, if I, if I could get the ability to share my screen, I can pull up the plans and walk through, you know, our existing conditions, our layout plan and grading and drainage. I'm not sure if that's possible.
Can you do that, Adam? What's up?
I'll try.
Surprised you guys didn't buy Chuck Steakhouse and have an even bigger lot.
Yeah, that's, that would be a consideration. I know a lot of folks have looked at it.
It's for sale.
All right, so you should be able to see my, my screen now, I believe.
Can't really see it from here.
David, if you could reference the page that you're on and perhaps-
I'm on sheet C2, the existing conditions plan.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so as Chris had mentioned, this site hosts the Herb Chambers Hyundai of Auburn Automobile Dealership. To the north is where the existing dealership building is. That area has existing inventory parking along the north and then also customer parking to the east of the building. That parking to the north and to the east of the existing building, as well as the existing building, will remain as-is and no proposed changes are being requested at this time to this area of the dealership. So the north portion of the property will remain as-is and be unchanged as it is today. And the main project will be to the south portion of the property. There's an access off of Washington Street that will remain as-is, that has a main drive along the eastern side of the parking that connects to the northern portion of the facility. That limits of pavement and that drive aisle will remain as-is in the postcondition. But the existing parking to the east of that drive aisle is being proposed to be removed and be reconfigured as it is today. It has kind of a curved configuration with single space parking. And it's just not the most efficient way for parking to be laid out on the property. So the main goal of this project is to reconfigure that parking. The site contains a series of existing catch basins that collect stormwater today. There's several outfalls to the east of the parking that goes to the bordering vegetated wetlands to the east. All of those are just captured through the catch basins and then run through drain pipe and are discharged undetained into the wetlands in the current condition. So as I move forward with grading and drainage on the later sheets, you'll see our proposal to upgrade the stormwater as part of this proposal to better help the protection of the bordering vegetated wetlands to the east. As part of this, we've also had this proposal reviewed by DPW and by the Conservation Commission as well, and we've received feedback from both and have addressed comments for both. And then we'll be addressing any peer review comments we get from Graves Engineering. So the next slide, I'm going to, our next page I'd like to go through would be sheet C5.2, which is our proposed layout that shows the reconfigured parking. Give you a minute just to pull up that page before I start talking through that.
I just wanna say, I just can't hear him clearly at all.
You can't?
No.
You wanna switch places? You wanna switch places?
No. Just move over there.
Is it more helpful if I speak louder?
Can you hear that, Ron?
I'm good.
Sure? I think just 'cause the acoustics in the room makes it difficult to be further away from the screen for people to hear you clearly. So-
Okay.
You may not have to speak any louder, or just maybe a little more less, and it may not echo as bad in the room, so you might be able to hear better. I can hear the echo. Go ahead.
Okay. So on sheet C5.2, we have our layout plan. It's zoomed into the southern portion of the parking area where we're proposing the reconfigured parking lot. So our existing curb cut off of Washington Street, which is a state highway layout, will remain as-is. All of our proposed work is within the limits of our property to stay out of the mass DOT right-of-way. The existing limits of pavement towards the east, towards the wetlands, will remain, and we will continue to have a drive aisle that connects the dealership's rear portion to the front portion where the sales showroom and service area are. As you can see, instead of having our drive aisles curve along adjacent to our drive aisle, we have now rotated them to go east to west and then have 90-degree parking. This has allowed for the inventory storage of vehicles and the number of parking spaces to be increased. We're also proposing six landscape islands and new sight lighting as part of this as well. There is a new proposed dumpster enclosure that will formalize the existing dumpsters on site and will also provide screening of the dumpsters with a cedar opaque fencing. The next page I wanna go through is our proposed grading and drainage. This is sheet C6. So our proposal is to have a fairly consistent grade from the western side of the property towards the eastern side of the property. It's roughly about a 5% grade consistently across across the parking lot, which will help keep from having doors open and swinging open and potentially hitting other vehicles and will help with our proposed drainage to get to a series of catch basins. We are trying to maintain what we can from, for existing catch basins on the northern portion of this southern area in here. And then we also are proposing some new catch basins due to the new parking lot configuration. In addition to the catch basins, we will have oil-water separators and- and CDS water quality units as part of our treatment train before entering into two infiltration systems. So the storm water on this southern portion will be captured through these series of catch basins. Not sure if you can see where I'm pointing, but that'll recharge the required amount of storm water as outlined in the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, as well as the Auburn Stormwater Rules and Regulations. We have existing outfalls that will be maintained as part of our proposal where storm water will eventually discharge. What we have done is we've reduced the rate in which water will be discharged through each of these outfalls, and we've also improved the water quality that will be headed towards the wetlands. So we'll be providing a better protection for the bordering vegetated wetlands that are to the east of the property. And as stated previously, we have already gone through and have this reviewed with Conservation, and we'll be meeting with them again tomorrow night to hopefully be issued a order of conditions through that process. We also have two retaining walls to the north of the parking lot that vary in size with, and those will be engineered as part of the construction process by a structural engineer. But we anticipate using a large block retaining wall similar to the retaining wall that is to the east of the existing dealership building.
So.
With that, I'd like to turn it over to questions.
Anybody have any questions besides me?
I just, John, I'm, I'm on something, I'm on the lighting plan.
Okay. On page C6, I may be mistaken, but did you say you're discharging to an outfall to the east of the lot?
Yes, so we have.
You don't own that property?
Existing. That, that is our property.
You own the wetlands?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then, what is the distance from the far left, I'm on plan C6, in your southwest corner, the upper corner of where the square bump out is, to?
Yep.
Say the radius on the curve?
Um. Bottom southwest corner to the radius?
Roughly.
About 68 feet?
68?
Yeah, if I'm looking at the, you're talking where we have the bump out is to the?
Not the radius going to, not the radius there on the bottom, to the radius far to the east, like say.
Oh, what's the total width, I got you.
By the triangle symbol where it says, I can't read it.
Manhole number six?
Yeah, I think that's where it is, right here? Yeah, I mean, right here, manhole six.
Going across from catch basin four to manhole six.
Oh, okay, the top portion. Um, that's roughly about 290 feet?
290?
Yes.
It's a 13-foot drop, it just seemed like it was steeper than it is, but it's only, it's less than 5% slope from there to there. Ron, you said you had some questions for C7?
On the lighting plan on C7, I, I assume that the dotted line is your property line? If you can.
Yes.
Sheet C7, right where it says Washington Street and Route 20?
Yep.
Down in the right-hand corner, and then above it, it's like an upside-down hat, and there's an A in it?
Yep.
And to the left and right of that, for a few inches, there's some above, some that are above zero for the, where there's supposed to be zero at the property line. The ones that are .1 are negative, it doesn't matter, but I'm not sure. On the other side of the line, they all say 1.
Point 1, yeah.
But I don't know which side, what, what side are we supposed to be looking at? The, right in the middle where the line is, I don't see any on that. Which ones apply to which?
So the .1 is off property, the 2.3 is on property that apply to the foot candles that's given off by A right at the property line. We don't have the exact number on this plan, but we can go back to the lighting company to see if they can generate the exact number that is at the property line to make sure that it's at.
Just down in that area on Southbridge Street, if it's close to the property line and they're at those numbers, .7, 2.3, 1 and 1/2, 1 and 1/2, 1.3, in that area.
Yep.
You know, I'd just like to see them, if it's right on the property line, be closer to the zero.
Okay.
And then on the upper right-hand side of that print, you, if you follow up and you keep going with the As that follow that curb line on the right-hand side?
Yep.
And right above the last A, there's one that goes vertical up to the top of the page. It says 9, 5.8, 2.3, and I'm not sure if there's any housing or anything in that area, but, and I'm not sure if that's your property line right there, because I don't see anything that denotes it.
That is not our property line there, that's just the edge of curb. And then as you go up the 9, the 5.8, the 2.3, that is going towards the existing dealership on our property. And then our property extends quite a bit east. But we can certainly take this plan and, and have it be at a, a larger scale, so it shows more of the property, and then try and make sure we're able to.
Where the street is, because that was one of our objectives from before, to not to have it that bright at the street. Where it has a.
Yep.
Or, and if, if, I'm not quite exactly sure where this is, but if there was neighbors up in that area.
The upper right, we don't have any neighbors, it's just the wetland that goes to the east. And then there's a commercial neighbor way on the other side that doesn't have any spill over towards that, that a butter.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Glenn.
I had a question, when the car carriers come in to deliver your cars, where do they park?
The car carriers usually will park, probably be easiest to see, they're able to access off of Washington Street and pull in and usually can probably, and can park somewhere on that drive aisle near the dumpster enclosure to unload the vehicles.
Yeah, because you can't unload on Route 20 or Route 12.
Yeah, it'd be on property.
Because the plans are a little convoluted, where's the snow storage for all this new parking lot?
So we included snow storage, that's in the stormwater report. We have an operations and maintenance plan. So we do denote a few areas on that plan where we use some of the landscape buffer off the edge of the parking area. But another thing that gets done is, as part of when you know a large snowstorm is coming, that the tech's working will kind of reorganize the vehicles to be in a certain way in which allows for certain parking spaces to then take on some of the snow storage area. So some of the parking spaces are denoted to be part of the snow storage. It's not every single space will be occupied by inventory storage, but also they'll be able to reorganize onsite to allow for snow to be stored within a few of the parking spaces. I don't have that plan up, but it was part of the stormwater report. Todd, who's on with me, might have a better idea of where that might be easiest to find if you wanted to pull it up through that report.
Well, when you, of course, we're not going to approve this tonight because it's going through peer review, but on your next submittal to the town, the planning board, please make a note on the plans of where that is and what you plan on doing. And then, like when Mr. was asking about the line down to the, the edge of the road, Mr. Brooks, where the, where the triangle is for the island, that line right there, I am assuming is the edge of right-of-way and the edge of your property. But that line doesn't exist anywhere in any of your legends.
Okay. We'll make a note to add that to our legend. Apologize for that. And I, I want to also apologize for the backwards plans on the 11 by 17s, that's, that's my, that's my fault for not checking to make sure when we had those go to print that they weren't done as, as described to be done. So I will certainly make sure that any prints moving forward that get submitted are, are that, not done that way. And I couldn't agree more that that is extremely frustrating, and, and that'll certainly be corrected on our next submittal.
I appreciate it. So I am thinking that you guys are looking for continuance to either our next meeting or the following meeting?
Yeah, I believe we were told, you know, we're probably a week or two to get peer review and, and to just give, give the board an appropriate amount of time to review our submittal. It's probably the, the end of March hearing makes the most sense. That way we can properly respond to the peer review when we receive it, and then also give you appropriate time to review any changes that we've made to address any comments that we may receive.
So which date do you prefer?
Was it the March 26th meeting?
Pardon me?
I believe that was the March 26th meeting, or it'd be.
That's fine, we can do that, if you need another extension, just let Adam know, we can continue it again.
Okay.
Continue this hearing to the March 26th meeting?
May I have a second? All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
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 Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Reeves, and I, it is a vote, we'll hopefully see you on the 26th, good luck.
Likewise, thank you, I appreciate everybody's time tonight.
Uh, next, other business, I don't believe there's any discussion, any modification. Excuse me, the decisions of 73 Jerome have been signed by everyone, I believe. May I have a motion to approve meeting minutes of 192024 as submitted?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Jason is an aye, myself is an aye, it is a vote. I don't have any update, but do you have any updates?
One quick update, administration's been working on updating the town's housing production plan. That plan needs to come before this board sometime next month for approval before it gets sent to the state. I believe we're looking at the 26th meeting. I'm going to try to get that plan to you as soon as possible, once we have it done. I believe it's about 30 or 40 pages long, just to require a plan by the state, so we're, we're going to get it done as soon as possible.
Anyone else have anything to bring up? Being none, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Glenn?
Aye.
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 Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Reeves, and I, it is a vote. Meeting is now adjourned.